It's really unfortunate because once it's if you just haven't ever seen it again, every superintended is either been investigated, or retired, or, or under, under fire, or, you know, it's like, uh, such a shame.
It is.
And you kind of, it's not your fault.
No.
That have the reasons.
We wouldn't be talking about.
Six o'clock.
I know, where is everybody?
Let's go.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna start the meeting now.
Bang it down.
Well, I want, I want the city man. All right, we'll start, okay. I want to wait till Greg gets, Greg gets to the. Yeah, I know. Greg, you ready? Did you get your razor mats in here? Yes, okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Meeting this April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Thank you for being here tonight, and we have a lot of exciting things happening. The meeting has started. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome, and we appreciate your attendance. Uh, we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we go into our presentations. Tonight, we are going to have five presentations, and presentations are normally where we recognize individuals, or organizations, or events that the city finds important to the community and which community members participate. So if I could begin the, uh, the meeting tonight by asking Jason Joseph and Ishmael Hul, Jason, who's a ninth grader at Dillard High, and Ishmael, who's an eighth grader at New River Middle School, please come to the podium here and join Commissioner Beasley Pittman and myself in, uh, leading the pledge. Hey, here we go.
Lend allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're back, we have a little gift for you. There you go, so don't want you to forget us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'll take some photos.
Absolutely. You do well, gonna take a picture. All right, very good. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst. Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Here. Uh, and, uh, so I have a few agenda announcements to, uh, recite, but before we do that, uh, I want to thank the two gentlemen who helped us lead in the pledge, and now I'd like to ask the audience to please share with me a moment of silence. Thank you. We have two agenda announcements, uh, on the minutes, on page sixteen, on February sixth, twenty twenty four, regular minutes, it, the word should be north, the northeast was corrected to say northwest, and M two, correct commission district is District Two, not District Four. You're welcome. Uh, there's a walk-on presentation where Commissioner Herbst is going to be delivering one regarding Financial Literacy Month. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved, seconded.
But moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are now approved. Uh, so our first presentation is with Vice, the new, newly minted Vice Mayor Steve Glassman, who is going to present a proclamation regarding National Therapy Animal Day. And I can, can I please ask Ann Mioli to please come forward from the Jack and Jill Children's Center? Hello, Ann.
Here. Okay, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ann, for being here. So we're gonna take care of this, and then please, hopefully you'll say a few words for us. This is from the Office of the Mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale Proclamation in recognition of National Therapy Animal Day. Whereas, thousands of pet partners' therapy animal teams are diligently serving in communities across the United States. And whereas, scientific research provides evidence that interactions with therapy animals contribute significantly to reducing stress, alleviating depression, regulating heart rates, reducing blood pressure, and strengthening the immune system. And whereas, within the city of Fort Lauderdale, therapy animal teams play an indispensable role in improving human health and well-being through the bond we share with these animals. And whereas, therapy animal teams extend their support to a diverse array of individuals in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those nearing the end of their lives. And whereas, these remarkable therapy animals, alongside their human companions, provide solace and healing to those in distress. And whereas, it is incumbent upon us to encourage more pet owners to consider the possibility of becoming pet partners volunteers, thereby expanding access to enriching therapy animal visits within our community. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as National Therapy Animal Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and dated this, the sixteenth day of April twenty twenty four, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalis.
We've got a picture, and then you're gonna finish yours, okay?
I'd like to say thank you, um, I'm with Jack and Jill Center. We have two therapy dogs that work there. Um, it's a early education center and an elementary school, and the work that the therapy dogs do is just robust. The children love them. Um, we've seen a incre- an increase in reading, an increase in attendance. So I'm very thankful, Mayor, that you identified this, because this is really beneficial to be able to support the work that the therapy animals do. So thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, Ann, for being here tonight.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now I'd like to, uh, invite Commissioner Beasley Pittman to present a proclamation as, uh, Zeta Chi Chapter seventieth anniversary day here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So can the members of the Zeta Chi Chapter please step forward? Handsome bunch.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'd like for you to talk back to me, that's the, the minister in me, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. My assignment tonight, I have the privilege of reading the proclamation that has been issued by the City of the Mayor of Fort Lauderdale in recognition of Zeta Chi Chapter seventieth anniversary. Whereas, the Zeta Chi Chapter of Omega Phi Psi Phi Paternity Incorporated was chaptered on April twenty-sixth, nineteen fifty-four, in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by seven distinguished Omega men, serving as a beacon of service and empowerment for the communities of Broward County. And whereas, the founding members established the Zeta Chi Chapter during the era marked by profound social challenges and racial disparities. And whereas, from its inception, the Zeta Chi Chapter has been dedicated to the advancement of civil rights, playing an active role in local and national movements for racial equality, including partner, partnering with the NAACP to combat racial discrimination and participating in protests to this manner of segregation practices. And whereas, despite facing challenges such as a decline in membership during the Vietnam War area and chartering of new chapters, the Zeta Chi Chapter remains steadfast in its commitment to show social justice and equality, continue to advocate for modularization communities both locally and nationally. And whereas, throughout the years, the Zeta Chi Chapter has demonstrated exemplary leadership with members serving in various roles in Broward County School Board, local government, justice, justice system, and other prominent organizations, making significant contributions to the legal profession, education, and community development. And whereas, the Zeta Chi Chapter has shown unwavering dedication to community service, forming partnerships with local organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club of Fort Lauderdale, to address critical issues that provide support to those in need. And as, and whereas, as the Zeta Chi Chapter celebrates its seventieth anniversary, it continues to embody the principles of manhood, scholarship, and preservation, representing a legacy that will inspire future generations in the city of Fort Lauderdale and beyond. Now, therefore, we as the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty four, as Zeta Chi Chapter twentieth anniversary day in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And this is dated the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty four, by Mayor Dean Trentalis.
You don't want to say anything? A few words?
Have a mic.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, staff. It is indeed a pleasure to be here and receive this honor on behalf of the Men of the Zeta Chi Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity. We're located right in the heart of the Sistrunk Quarter, eleven oh eight Northwest Sixth Street. Uh, we've been doing this for seventy years, and we look to be doing this for a hundred and seventy more. Um, we are a beacon of light in this community and in this county, and we want to partner more with the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County community, as well as those in surrounding areas. So thank you again for this honor, and we really take this appreciate, and appreciate this, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I did notice that, uh, Zeta Chi is the same age as the Vice Mayor, but, uh, yeah, exactly. A lot of great things. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
I'm just gonna say, I want everybody to know who the Vice Mayor is. I'm no longer the Vice Mayor, I am not seventy years old.
You're gonna be seventy-one? Oh, I didn't know. This, this is seventy. Really? When was your birthday? Okay, now may I present, uh, Commissioner Sturman, who is going to, uh, provide to us a proclamation regarding Arbor Day here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. If I can invite Laura Tourly to come to the podium, Laura, our urban forester. How are you, Laura? One over here. Okay. I'll, I'll read, okay, I'll read. Ready? Thank you. In recognition of Arbor Day, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty four, whereas, for over one hundred and fifty years, Arbor Day has been observed throughout the United States, highlighting the importance of conservation efforts. And whereas, trees are responsible for creating a more sustainable environment by producing oxygen, cooling urban areas, and improving water quality, and reducing impacts of stormwater. And whereas, trees play a critical role in creating healthier, safer, and more connected communities. Trees provide shade and can cool our cities by up to ten degrees, helping to prevent heat-related deaths in urban areas. And whereas, trees provide vital habitat for native and migratory birds, butterflies, and other wildlife. Recognizing this importance, the City of Fort Lauderdale has been a certified community wildlife habitat by the National Wildlife Federation. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale has identified tree canopy coverage as a key sustainability metrics in its nineteen twenty-nine press play strategic plan, and aims to increase its tree canopy to thirty-three percent by twenty forty, as outlined in its advanced Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale has initiated an urban forestry master planning effort in twenty twenty four to engage neighbors and to guide and support the enhancement and preservation of the city's tree canopy. And whereas, these efforts have contributed to the City of Fort Lauderdale being recognized as a Tree City USA for forty-five years by the Arbor Day Foundation due to its longstanding active urban forestry program. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale has committed in twenty twenty four to participating in the Arbor Day Foundation's Energy Saving Tree Program. And whereas, this commitment aligns with the City of Fort Lauderdale's ongoing effort to further enhance and expand its tree canopy. Now, therefore, we, as the City of Fort Lauderdale and City Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty four, as Arbor Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and encourage all residents to observe Arbor Day by planting trees to preserve the well-being of our community. Signed, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, by our mayor, Dean Trentalis. Thank you. No more. Oh, my goodness. Okay, can I say a few words? Laura, you want to say a few words?
Commissioner Sturman, Mayor, Mission, thank you so much for this proclamation. It means a lot to the city to, uh, honor trees every year. Uh, it shows a commitment by the Commission to move forward and, uh, preserve the canopy we have, as well as, uh, plan for the urban forestry in the future. Uh, the Urban Forestry Master Plan that was mentioned in the proclamation, I'm really looking forward to reaching out to a lot of the community and getting their input so that we can address concerns in each of the Commissioners' districts appropriately. And thank you again.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Now I'd like to invite Commissioner Herbst, who's gonna present a proclamation regarding Financial Literacy Month. I'd like to know if Casey DeLaPena can please come to the podium.
So I'm proud to be able to do this. This is in recognition of National Financial Literacy Month. So as a, uh, a, a, and this is, this is for teaching youth, uh, about how to prepare to, to manage their money and deal with the financial world. So I'm a CPA, I'm a former stockbroker, I'm a former entrepreneur, and I love what Junior Achievement does, so. Whereas, April is Financial Literacy Month, a time to recognize the importance of managing money wisely, particularly during difficult economic times, I hope everybody did their taxes. Uh, by preparing individuals with the skills to navigate financial challenges, we create opportunities for upward mobility and a brighter future for all. And whereas, personal financial education is essential for ensuring that the youth of Fort Lauderdale are prepared to manage their money and credit wisely and responsibly. And whereas, Junior Achievement of South Florida, celebrating its sixty-fifth anniversary in twenty twenty four, is a leading nonprofit organization that provides entrepreneurship, work readiness, and financial literacy education and programs to more than eighty thousand kindergarten through twelfth-grade students each year. And whereas, founded locally by the Fort Lauderdale Rotary Club in nineteen fifty-nine, Junior Achievement has grown from serving just three hundred and seventy-three high school students in its first year to inspiring more than one point one million youth over the past sixty-five years. And whereas, through a unique partnership with Broward County Public Schools, more than thirty thousand fifth and eighth grade students participate in Junior Achievements, JA BizTown, and JA Finance Park programs. These programs teach students about personal finance, career exploration, and workforce skills. Students learn how financial decisions impact their lives, the importance of saving and investing, and effective expense management. And whereas, students participating in JA BizTown and Finance Park programs engage in eighteen hands-on classroom lessons that prepare them for immersive, real-life simulations. These simulations allow students to experience financial concepts and career scenarios firsthand, building skills they'll use throughout their lives. And whereas, Junior Achievement's financial literacy education is also embedded into every Junior Achievement high school program. By empowering youth with the skills to manage, save, and invest their earnings wisely, we pave the way for them to avoid economic hardship and achieve lifelong financial independence. Now, therefore, we as City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty four as National Financial Literacy Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and encourage all to get involved to advocate and empower our citizens, especially our youth, around the benefits of financial education. Dated the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty four, by our Honorable Mayor Dean J. Trentalis.
Want to share a few words, Ask?
Just a few words, yeah. That was a long one.
Yeah, it was.
Thank.
Longer than, longer than some sort of another's.
Thank you, City of Fort Lauderdale, Mayor Trentalis, and esteemed Commissioners, and Junior Achievement Board Member Daphne Seanville, who's in the audience tonight, for your unwavering support of Junior Achievement of South Florida. Your commitment empowers every single fifth and eighth grade public school student in Fort Lauderdale and nearly eighty thousand students annually across Broward and Southern Palm Beach Counties. Our program, which is mandated by Broward Schools, helps to create futures and build brighter communities, and we graciously thank all of you for your support. And for those of you in the audience who have not yet visited JA World in Coconut Creek, I invite you to please visit us to see the impact we create on a daily basis. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And there's amazing activity, I've been out there, appreciate it, awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, now our last presentation, I would like to invite Heather Geronimus, who's Senior Director of Social Equity, Opportunity, and Impact, to join me, uh, at the podium regarding Walk Like Mad and Mad Dash Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Heather? So it's my honor, um, to be able to present this proclamation to Mothers Against Drunk Driving, MAD Broward, twenty twenty four, Walk Like Mad, and Mad Dash. Whereas, Walk Like Mad is the signature fundraising event of Mothers Against Drunk Driving, the nation's premier organization, working to end drunk and drugged driving, support victims of those, of these violent crimes, and to prevent underage drinking. Alarmingly, drunk driving crashes cause injury to every seventy-nine seconds in the United States. This troubling trend continues with a thirty-one percent increase in drunk driving deaths reported by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one. MAD Broward, established in nineteen eighty, provides victim support services, community education, and youth programs that work to eliminate underage drinking throughout the South Florida community. On Sunday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty four, MAD Southeast Florida will host the UKG and SALA Foundation Walk Like Mad and MAD Dash Fort Lauderdale Five K, presented by the Sheriff's Foundation of Broward County, to raise funds to support MAD's Broward, MAD Broward's youth programs, community education, and victim support services, helping to further MAD's mission. Finally, the mayor and city commissioners remind Fort Lauderdale residents that while, um, while driving while impaired is a hundred percent preventable, and we urge everyone to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures, such as designating a sober driver to prevent impaired driving. Now, therefore, we as the City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty four as Walk Like Mad and MAD Dash Month here in our city, and do encourage all citizens to participate in this very important event. Again, that's April twenty-eighth, and Heather, you'll give us some more details on that. And to further urge citizens to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures to prevent impaired driving. Dated the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty four, signed by myself, Mayor Trentalis. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mayor Trentalis, thank you so much for this great honor. As you detailed, Mothers Against Drunk Driving is one of the nation's oldest nonprofits, and, you know, we're focused completely on saving lives from this one hundred percent preventable crime. Over thirteen thousand people die in our country each year at the hands of drunk drivers. And in two thousand and nine, my father, Dr. Robert Geronimus, a physician and a resident of Broward County and the city of Fort Lauderdale, was one of those people. He was struck on foot, uh, when he was crossing the street on foot, and thrown seventy-five feet to his death, um, in a street in Miami by someone who, uh, drove without care for others. And, um, you know, that person is out of prison now, but my family's life will never be the same. But instead of, um, being angry, I've tried, tried to turn that into, that pain into purpose, um, and tried to save lives with the city of Fort Lauderdale, with Fort Lauderdale PD, um, and all sorts of volunteers and community. with Fort Lauderdale PD, and all sorts of volunteers and community supporters at Walk Like Mad and MAD Dash Fort Lauderdale. This event has existed for 13 years, and thousands of people have toed the start line at Walk Like Mad and MAD Dash Fort Lauderdale on Andrews and La Solis to save lives in our community. And I couldn't be more grateful for the support of the city, for the support of Fort Lauderdale PD. When this event started, when my dad died, we did not have a DUI task force in Fort Lauderdale, but now we do have one, led by Sergeant Thomas, and we have high-visibility law enforcement operations in the city. And we are so grateful for the lives that you save inevitably every day by being here. And we invite the entire city to come out and be a part of Walk Like Mad and MAD Dash Fort Lauderdale on Sunday, April 28th. Fun for the whole family, from the little kids to the older adults. We've got walking, running, lots of entertainment, lots of great food, and it's all for a great cause, and it's a fun day with a meaningful purpose. Starts at 7:00 a.m. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I, Mr. Mayor, could I say a word before they leave? Heather, I knew your dad. I worked with him in Florida Medical Center for many, many years. I loved your dad, awesome individual. I think the last time I saw you, you were this big. He'd be so proud of you like I am. Thank you for the work that you do, I am honored. Thank you so much. Okay, that completes our presentations for tonight. Thank you all for your patience and your interest. At this time, I would like to ask each member of the commission if they have any interest in pulling any item from the consent agenda. What happens there is that normally our consent agenda items are voted on all at once. If there's a, an item that anyone, any member of the commission wishes to pull and vote on separately, I will ask for that at this time. And if there's anyone from the community that wants to speak on any of these consent agenda items, if it has been pulled, please wait for that item to be discussed. If it has not been pulled, we'll invite you to speak beforehand. So at this point, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you wish to pull?
None.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None tonight.
Vice Mayor?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Sturman?
I have three, lucky me.
Three?
Three. Some, just for discussion, some of them, but CR1.
CR1?
CR4.
CR5? CR5?
CR4 and CR.
So 1, 4, and 5?
Correct.
Okay. So except for CR1, 4, and 5, do I hear motion to approve all the other consent agenda items?
Do you have any, Mr. Mayor, or not?
I'm sorry?
Any that you want or not? Do you have any you want to pull?
No.
Okay, courteous.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, did move the seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so all those consent agenda items, other than the ones that were pulled, have now been approved. So if you're here for that reason, you, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, otherwise your item has been approved. So good luck, flock test. Okay. Commissioner, CR1.
Okay, could I have, I guess we could start with, maybe Mr. Dunkel would be the right one. Does he come up here, or for, has anybody?
Is Bob Dunkle here? Oh my God.
Anybody signed up to speak about this? I don't, I'm not pulling it to oppose it, I just want more info and clarification for the community more than anything. So don't, don't assume I'm against this project, I just want some clarity.
I know, it's newfangled, just push the button.
There you go. Would you be the best one?
Bob Dunkle, Assistant City Attorney.
Would you be the best one to speak on this, or somebody, or probably you know more about it than anybody?
I'm probably the best one.
Okay, just a little heads up, so we know, you had explained this to me, but just to share it with the rest of my colleagues.
Bless you. We've got two adjacent docks. One is 1342 Ponce de Leon, which is a through lot. So I think that's 915, but I'm going to refer to that as 1342. Immediately to the south is 919. The building department, when it issued the permit for the dock at 1342, made a mistake, and the dock was built farther south than what it should have been, which basically translated into 919 not being able to build their dock where it's supposed to be built. The resolution that would be adopted, if it's adopted tonight, for 919 is contingent. It's a, the effective date is when the noncompliant portion of the 1342 dock is demolished, and the city will be, will be doing the demolition. If you look at your, if you look at your backup, we did something that we've not typically done, but there's an Exhibit C, which shows precisely what portion of the 1342 dock is noncompliant. And if you look at page 7, subparagraph 19, we outline exactly what is to be demolished. Does that answer your question?
Right, and just so, so for the benefit of my colleagues here, so 919 is the one that is, will be made whole after this, and they will be able to, this is allowing them to build the dock that they normally would be allowed to do. Okay, Mr. Mayor, with that being said, could I move this item?
Would you like to introduce the resolution?
I would like to.
Okay, the introduce, introduction, introduced. We want to get out of here tonight.
Mr. Dunkle, thank you. Mr. Dunkle, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Okay, the resolution's been introduced, please call the roll.
And Commissioner, that's for approving.
For approval, for approval.
Thank you. A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to Section 8-144 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida granting a dock permit for installation, use, maintenance, and repair by applicants William S. Trethewey and Linda M. Trethewey, husband and wife of a proposed 63.4 foot plus or minus long by 6 foot plus or minus wide marginal dock and access steps extending a maximum distance of 6 feet plus or minus from the outside edge of the seawall cap, abutting the waterway adjacent to 19, or 919 Bordeaux Road, authorizing the proper city officials to countersign the Declaration of Covenants running with the land, respecting a city-issued dock permit authorizing recordation of this resolution and declaration of covenants by the applicant, subject to terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict here with and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and CR1 is now approved, CR4. This is a resolution supporting the advancement of the preferred alternative concept for the Southeast-Southwest 17th Street Mobility Hub Project. Commissioner Sturman?
Okay, I think that, I know that Ted, you're going to want to speak in a few minutes, but just before you do, if I could have Ben Rogers come up, I think you'd be the best one to discuss this, is right, Ben?
Well, he is in charge of the department.
Correct. I know that MPO was, and DOT, a few other partners were working on this. I've attended several of these workshops, I actually coupled just in our office alone, and we've had, I think, a total of three public workshops. And there was some concern in the community, and it was also raised at my pre-agenda about trees. I'm going to give a quick summary, and then you could fill in the gaps where I might have made a mistake. This is in response to this, the county going to be having the commuter rail station right by Broward General. And in order to have that commuter rail station, they need to make improvements for anticipated incoming traffic, both vehicular as well as pedestrian and bicycle. And there's improvements that are made, sidewalks, bike lanes. The big concern that we've had, and we've had this before, and this was voiced by us, and was also voiced at each one of our public meetings, was the removal of trees. I think there was several proposals, then we narrowed it down to three, and I think of the three, it was widely accepted that the proposal that kept the most amount of trees was the one that, that was picked, and that's the one that you're advancing here. The question is, they are going to be adding some sidewalks, I think between 4th and 9th. And I've spoken to the presidents of the neighborhoods, the two neighbors involved, both Pointe Etat Park and Crescent Park, who are in favor of this. Their concern is two things, trees and, and the sidewalk. I believe there's portions of the sidewalk on the south side that are, that are, there's gaps, and this plan will fill in those gaps, but the problem is they do have to remove trees. So the big question number one is, I believe this is the, the plan that preserves the trees the most. And number two, would there be mitigation, the trees that are removed will be replaced? Those are the two questions that I have.
Yeah, so that's my understanding as well, Commissioner, that, that this is the option that's moving forward, is the preferred from the, from the neighborhoods. As for the, the planning and design phase, right? So right now what you're doing is approving the conceptual plan, and then they'll advance that to the design phase, where they'll address issues like conflicts with trees, utilities, and advance it to that phase. So there'll still be some public outreach, there'll be, still be things, but this is approving the concept, so they can move to the next phase.
And you answered my another question, would, would there be opportunity for more public input as we go along? And the answer is yes, correct. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think that there's some members in my community that didn't express.
Does that complete your, your question?
That completes my thought, yes. Thank you, thank you, Ben.
Ted Insaro has asked to speak on this.
Push the bottom, no, push the bottom of the mic.
I would know by now, huh? Okay, now, this, this is exactly my neighborhood. I mean, it starts at 9th Avenue and 19th, I mean, on 17th Street. I live on 9th Avenue and 19th Street. I drive, I ride this every single day, the entire distance. When I go to work in Southport, I mean, right up the, the entire way. You have it broken down into three areas. I, I firmly agree with three out of the four is fine. You got the, that train thing coming in, the commuter, that's fine. But I don't understand the part west of 4th Avenue, which is 100% residential area. It doesn't have anything to do with the commuter rail, anything. Now here is the thing, on the north side of 17th Street, it is full sidewalk the entire distance. Now, on the south side, it is intermittent, but I went down there twice. Now if you walk, now sidewalks are in straight lines, right? Straight lines. If you start and walk straight, you are going to have to remove six oak trees, four generational oak trees, that I know of the family that has lived in this one house on 17th Street and 8th Avenue for four generations, that the original man, who knew my dad and Floyd Hall at Little Yankee Stadium, planted the trees, and now his great-grandson is living in the same house, and he can look out and say, my great-grandfather planted those trees. These are enormous, beautiful oak trees. I don't think y'all did this, the homework, and actually walked straight. Because sidewalks don't curve, so you're going to have the six oak trees, you're going to have five coconut palms, one beautiful Florida slash pine tree that's in the way. I measured 50 feet of shrubbery, it's all going to have to be taken out. Also, five of the homes, because their land has always gone to the street, always. Five have paper, paper us driveways, so that they paid for it. So you're going to have to rip up these driveways. Now like I said, across the street is full sidewalk. That, that shouldn't be a problem. I don't understand why, you know, you just gave out in a proclamation, we're the tree city of America, whatever they said, and now we're going to just rip out generational oak trees.
Okay, all right, so.
Three-fourths of this plan I like.
Okay, so Commissioner, do you want to work on that?
Yeah, yeah, let me talk, let me say a couple of things, Ted. First of all, I did speak to Ray on Pointe Etat Park. That's not the area in, in concern, but I did speak to Pat. She walked it, she called me, we spoke again today. I think that it's going to be, some of the coconut palms are the big ones. I think some of the oaks you mentioned are not necessarily going to be removed. However, if I could have Ben just address some of that, I mean, whatever we could do to preserve the trees, if you wanted, if you could touch upon that, Ben, I mean, that is a concern of mine.
So we're going to cut down trees to put a sidewalk in?
Yes.
Well, the problem you have.
All the, all the people that are not going to use the commuter rail?
Right, and then, now you have a sidewalk with no shade, because all the trees are gone, and right across the street is a full sidewalk.
All right, don't yell, he's right there.
But there are, when I gather, there are pieces of that sidewalk that are done, pieces that are missing, and they're filling in the gaps. All right, well, what is, go ahead, Ben, if you could, if you could address that.
Yeah, so I mean, I can explain yourself.
No, 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 Ben, relax, Ben, relax.
I can, I can definitely speak with Mr. Insaro about this offline and with staff to go through some things. But my understanding, to your point, Commissioner, is there's, there's multiple plans and kind of concepts that came forward. This one had the least number of impacts. There's a plan to relocate some of the trees, and there are some impacts that trees would have to be removed. I believe those ones are the ones that are in the median, not along the sidewalk. But I would, I would need to confer with staff to, to confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Okay, going forward.
There's no medium on 4th Avenue to 9th Avenue. It's a two-lane little residential street.
Well, going forward, if you could, I mean, work with, I mean, Pat is, we've spoken to her several times, and she's gone through some of these. If you could just keep that dialogue open, whatever we could do to preserve, obviously they're going to replant, but preserving whatever we can with trees, with the understanding that that's our priority.
Well, to be honest with you, Commissioner, I don't think we should approve this tonight, until this is reworked. I don't think we should approve this.
Well, if you want to, if you want to.
I think we should.
I'd be fine with that, I will tell you.
We should defer it, because this is.
We've had, I think, three or four community inputs, and we've gone through the whole thing, and we've, we have, we have, and, and the residents in the neighborhoods have overwhelming support for this particular plan.
Well, you know, they're not going to build this, this commuter rail like tomorrow. So we have plenty of time to, to do whatever improvements we have. This is basically a walkway between federal highway and the proposed station. So we got, right?
Yeah, but we do have some time sensitivity. The, the MPO wants a resolution of support by the end of this month, so that way they can put it in their program for their next year's funding. So obviously, we can reach out to Mr. Stewart and see if there's some flexibility there, but my understanding is that they were trying to get this resolution support.
Yeah, but I, if what Mr. Insaro said is true, it would be a shame to take down one tree. It makes no sense for, just for, that we would, we would prefer a sidewalk over a canopy tree. I mean, this is, doesn't make any sense to me.
When you cross the street, it's full, all the way down from 4th Avenue to 9th Avenue, it's full sidewalk on the north side of 17th Street.
Do you have a map, could you show us a map?
Ted, did you go to those, all those meetings that we've heard about?
Yes.
Did you express that at all the meetings?
This part was never discussed, that of taking the trees off west of 4th Avenue.
Why wasn't it discussed?
I don't, you know, we didn't, we were concentrating mostly from 4th Avenue to the railroad tracks, from the railroad tracks to 3rd Avenue, from 3rd Avenue to the federal highway, which all makes sense, because that's part of this community. But this is strictly residential. These people, I mean, Croissant Park's about to have their 100th year anniversary this year. These are some old, classic, beautiful houses with old, classic, beautiful trees. This has, this part is a neighborhood, has nothing to do with the commuter rail.
But we, we did.
People aren't going to walk from their house on 17th Street to go up there to the commuter rail.
How many generational trees did you say are going to be removed?
Four.
Four? And Ben, is, are you able to confirm that?
Yeah, Ben, could you stop a map?
IT, can you put Exhibit 1, please? IT, Exhibit 1?
And can you confer with IT that they're putting Exhibit 1?
We're talking about the yellow area?
The yellow, we did have, just, Mr. Mayor, we did have, in addition to those public meetings, we had, I think, two meetings with the neighborhoods themselves. They were Zoom, and she was there. She went through this with a fine-tooth comb. And we did a bird's eye view, but when we did them, they went through every street, and they went through, and their desire, you know, with, with sidewalks and whatnot, is, is.
It may be a misunderstanding, but.
Well, we have a letter from, we have a letter, you want to read that into the record, or? Or, okay, could you send it to the?
IT, if you can pick up Exhibit 3, please.
We have a letter from both presidents, or just from one? An email from both, so they, they did ask if we could read that in.
So in the resolution itself, if you scroll down to page maybe 3 or 4, should be the beginning of some of the illustrations. So you can see here from Southwest 9th to Southwest 6th, there's really no impacts. Between.
Which exhibit are you looking at?
This is a part of the resolution, so this is on Exhibit 3.
It's, it's, it's in the backup.
Okay, I was on Exhibit 2.
It's very hard to, to see where there are trees.
I know. It's hard to see trees on this.
So far, we haven't seen any, so between Southwest.
Because it's a schematic, it doesn't.
Between Southwest 4th and, and the tracks, you can see there's none on the plans showing any kind of impact.
How between, how about Southwest 8?
That's fine, I'm only concerned 9th Avenue to 4th Avenue, that's it.
So can we see that section?
Yeah, that was back the first page.
It's a Ganvic, but it's not a photograph.
9th to 4th?
Right here.
So where are the trees?
They don't show any.
So it's, I think that's, you know, the, the point of confusion. On this, you don't see any, right? They're, they're not.
You can't see from.
Right, if you go.
Satellite imagery.
If, if you go two more, two more pages down, just to show you on the plans, like here, on this slide, you can see in the red box, removal of trees to extend westbound left turn lane. They have them highlighted, they call them out exactly what trees are impacted. If you go to the next page, there's another section that identifies where the trees are and where they're getting relocated and what would need to be removed. So you can see of of all five or six pages here, there's really three sections that identify trees, two of them in the median, and then the relocation of that one.
Not of this great detail from Ninth Avenue to Fourth Avenue.
IT, can you please put Google Maps and let's put street view? Google Maps, street view, southwest Seventeenth Street and Ninth Avenue.
Between Ninth and fourth, Seventeenth between Ninth and fourth, southwest.
I'm actually looking at it right now, and there is an, an oak tree on the south side. There, if you could just go in there, street view, and now.
Okay, that's right at Ninth Avenue, that's Ninth Avenue, that's not Seventeenth.
Yeah, does it go to your right, please, IT? Okay.
So which, is that, is that tree coming down on the left?
Go, go, there you go, okay.
Hang on a second.
Is that tree coming down?
This, you're, you're going, you're going west.
I'm sorry, go east, go back, because this, you already have sidewalks there, yeah. Okay, by the blue car.
Okay, so that's fourth, is that right, Ted?
That's Ninth Avenue.
That's Ninth.
It's, it's.
So let's keep going.
This is Ninth?
Go a little bit, you gotta go left here, and then.
To the left, go to your left by the blue car.
Right?
Yeah, right there, click there, no, go to the left.
That's seven, there you go, Seventeenth, gotta turn right at the stop sign.
Yeah. Now go straight east.
Make a right turn.
There you go, go straight down.
There's already sidewalks on both sides.
Trees, whatever.
Yes, but there's, there's gaps in there, Dean, there's some.
That you're looking at, right there.
On the left?
Go, on the left, on the, on the right hand.
On the right, keep going, IT, to, keep going.
You notice on this side, it's all sidewalk, it's, that tree would have to go.
On the right hand side, you're saying? Hang on, no, you're going the wrong way, go to the right.
That one right there.
Would that have to go or not?
Yeah.
For some reason.
That generational?
So, no, go a little bit further, you're still only on about eighth Avenue.
So. Hey, hey, folks, could I weigh in on this for one second? Because if anybody has driven up and down Bayview since we did the sidewalk project up there, it meanders all over the place, it goes around trees and up hills and down and all kinds of places. So it doesn't have to be a straight line shot, so Ben, Ben, talk about the sidewalk on Bayview for a second.
I'd be all in for that.
So Mayor, if I, if I can.
Yes.
Those shrubs would go right there, by.
Oh, the shrubs. Well, it's pretty ratty sidewalk there.
Ratty.
The sidewalk's pretty.
Where are the trees?
No, you gotta, you gotta keep going east.
Keep going east, keep going, keep going.
With the metal to the pedal.
Where's the generational tree?
There, those would go, right there.
On the right?
Yes, on the right.
Everything's on the right, I believe, everything.
Well, they're gonna be, they're gonna be transplanted, so those are young enough to be trans.
Transplant plans on these trees, only up further in the median trips, further up.
So, Mr. Mayor, there, there is a representative from the MPO here tonight who's been part of.
Yes, I know, I'm staring right at him, and he's laughing.
I don't know if you want him to come up and clarify some of the these aspects.
Where are the generational?
Oh, in the meantime, would you like me to read an email from the president of the neighborhood, or that wouldn't be helpful?
No, Dean, welcome, what's that?
Will you want me to read the email that I just got from the president? This is not, this is, Ted's neighborhood is to the west. These are all in Croissant Park, actually, and the president.
Croissant Park?
Correct, they're not in Ribrobes, and the president of Croissant Park sent me an email.
Okay, I'd like you to read that.
Okay.
One moment, please.
You want, I I could have, I could have David read it, he's a better reader than I am.
Well, I'm sure you're smart enough to read an email.
Dear Dean.
You brighten our day.
Once upon a time, we were Tree City USA.
We are still, I don't see those as being like generational trees.
Still gotta go further east, you still, you're not even to Fourth Avenue yet.
Would you want to read it?
You're not to Fourth Avenue yet.
All right, keep going, keep, whoever, whoever doing this. David passed it on his computer.
Okay, let's keep going while you read your email.
Okay, David, you could read it, David, go ahead.
It'll be like us.
David?
Welcome to Seventeenth Street.
Yes.
David, go ahead.
I know that guy on the bike.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. This is from Pat Rathburn.
That might be me.
It's from Pat Rathburn, is the president of Croissant Park?
Yeah, Croissant Park.
Okay, but what does dear Pat have to say?
Croissant Park Civic Association has had the mobility folks make numerous presentations going back a few years regarding the plans for improvements between southwest Ninth Avenue and US One along Seventeenth Street. They have worked with us at Pointe Santa Park to develop what we believe is the best plan for biking, walking, traffic improvements in the area. Most of these presentations have been at the board level, but at least two were the general membership. The board has been consistent in selecting the plan that is before you for approval tonight. There's been a lot of chatter on social media the last few days about removing trees. The whole purpose of the plan we selected was so that the trees wouldn't be removed, or the few as possible, if any removal is necessary. The plan includes a lengthened turn lane from Seventeenth Street westbound onto Andrews Avenue, which will require the removal of several cabbage palms, but we believe the resulting traffic improvements warrant the removal of non-shade trees in that area. As to the sidewalks on the south side of Seventeenth Street from Fourth to Ninth, most, most of these blocks have sidewalks and we're in favor of connecting them. There was some mention that people's properties extend to the pavement, as you know, that is not the case, the swale area belongs to the city. We are, of course, encouraging the city to be sensitive to the property owners and locate the sidewalk connectors in such a way to minimize interference with any mature trees. The end.
Okay, thank you. Tell us your thoughts.
Okay, good, good evening, my name is Christopher Restrepo, I'm from the Broward MPO.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you so much, thank you. And I am the project manager on the MPO side for the Seventeenth Street Mobility Hub. And Ted, I appreciate you coming out here for these comments, these are the exact things that we want to hear to make sure that we have a very successful project. We have heard from the community numerous times that trees, the elimination of trees is a no-go. And what we have done is what we've, we've put together a conceptual plan, meaning it's not the full design just yet, so it's not what's exactly going in the ground, it does not have the full specs or the measurements of everything that's going into the ground. That will happen in the fall if we get the approval today. But what we want to do is preserve those trees as much as we can. So what you see in those illustrations are concepts for filling in the gaps within the sidewalk network. If we find out that there is a violation of those trees within that sidewalk, then we won't do it, absolutely we won't. There's gonna be numerous opportunities through our design phase where we're gonna be going out to the public again. And actually, what I'm hearing, especially from your recommendation today, is that when we do our field visit, we should probably take some community members with us so that they can point out what trees or what, what aspects of their neighborhood are really important for that preservation.
See, the left side, it's all sidewalk the whole way down.
Yep.
You know, what's, that's great, okay.
So why not use, why not use the left sidewalk rather than the right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think MPO's got the message, and we appreciate your, your public testimony. Let us move on, I think the resolution should be introduced and approved, and we can work together and get this done, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, especially that arbitrage.
So Commissioner Sterman, you've introduced the resolution?
Sure.
Okay, introduce. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida endorsing the preferred alternative concept for the southwest-southeast Seventeenth Street Mobility Hub and supporting the efforts of the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization to prepare the recommended capital improvements to apply for federal transit administrative funding, providing for conflicts, providing for sufferability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman? Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and CR Four is approved, CR Five, Commissioner Sterman.
Same issue, just want to, this should be a lot easier, but just, when they do this project, just to, what, whatever we could do to preserve the trees, Ben, it's the same issue.
Would you like to introduce the resolution?
Sure, you wanted us to quick comment about that, Ben, or you don't need to?
Yeah, do you have a quick comment to make?
But there was concern about tree, trees being sacrificed on this project too, but that's not.
Please share the same sensibility of trees and prefer preservation as you have at CR Four.
Right.
Yes.
I, I will, I, I don't think that's the case for this one.
You know, it need be.
Okay, if need be, so I'll introduce that.
If need be, Ben, can you just tie a yellow ribbon around the old oak tree?
Oh, my goodness. You get the. Okay, uh, uh.
You introduce CR Four.
Introduce.
CR Five.
Introduce.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving and authorizing execution of a state of Florida Department of Transportation District Four Landscape Maintenance memorandum of agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for installation and maintenance of landscape improvements within the right of way of State Road Five, and then an assumption of liability and hold harness agreement with P A W A C Q C O Holdings Five LLC in providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and CR Five is now approved. Uh, thank you, everybody, for your patience on this. Uh, moving on to motions, this is M One, a motion approving an event agreement and request for music exemption for the catch sport fishing championships in District Four. Uh, someone like to move the item?
Move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and M One's approved, M Two, motion approving an event agreement with request for music exemption and related road closure for the Spring May Block Party, also in District Four.
No, now, we, we corrected that to District Two.
Oh, I'm sorry, District Two.
Yes, I think, I think this is the one I thought was in two, and, and Greg, in, in pre-agenda.
We told you wrong.
Oh, it is in District Two?
It is in District Two.
I know I'd get, I'd think for.
Sorry about that.
Uh, Steve, I'm sorry.
That's okay. West of the railroad tracks.
I know, but I thought it was.
You want to move the item?
Actually, I have a few questions and comments about this.
Okay, go ahead.
If that's okay.
Yes, it's okay.
Thank you. So I, I don't know who, who, who's the best person to speak to, Greg?
Um, there's Carl and.
Carl, okay.
Yeah.
So here's some concerns, you know, we've been working on for a while now revitalization of this area, the Hemmershy Street area. Years ago, there was an association of business owners, and it was very active, and it was a very important part of that entertainment district. That no longer is the case, there's no association, whatever. So my first question is, because I, I'm not aware of a group there that's active, so who is this downtown Hemmershy Village Association? Because we don't have any group like that, that I'm aware that we've been working with in the area. So that's why I'm just curious as to what that is, because we try to identify a group that used to be part of the entertainment district, but that's no longer the case.
I'm gonna ask Anthony Fajardo, if he could follow up with that question with Luisa, to determine if that is a group that is registered with us as an association.
We have a gentleman here who looks like he wants to speak.
How you doing? Uh, thank you for listening, everybody. We started a downtown Hemmershey Association about a year ago. Uh, myself, I'm one of the owners of the den downtown Fort Lauderdale, and Ian is the other co-president from the original Fat Cats. So after COVID and everything, the whole association fell apart, so we're trying to do our best to get some people back downtown, which has been an absolute struggle. So, uh, just trying to put together any kind of type of events and drive some business downtown, that's where we're at.
No, thank you for that, so I, I just want to make sure, though, that the city is aware of this association, because, you know, as I said, we've been working for a while now with, putting together with DSD, we've had the charrettes, we've had the workshops, we're trying to do a whole revitalization of the area. So is this going to be a recognized association, or is this just something that some people have done on their own, or?
This was reinstated by Gina from Riverwalk helped me reinstate this association. So I'm, I'm pretty sure everything was done correctly, not like something we just threw together.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here, I, I, there's just a little bit of a disconnect, so I just want to make sure that that is what's happening here, because that's good to know, and I wish you all the best, and I hope that we're able to promote that even more. Maybe, is Gina here? She was here earlier in the day, but maybe not anymore. Okay, so just a couple of questions while you're there. If you look at your application, on page four of six, which is our exhibit two, there are so many places where, I don't know what it says. Company name, it's just got like N T S T A, space, 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 I L L, space, 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 A N D L, under tents or canopies, four, space, N T S I, onsite contact names, A R A O U, phone number four two four, I just don't know what this application.
It's in code, it's in code.
Isn't it code?
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time reading the application, I don't, I can't figure it out.
Anthony, or who would be, or Carl?
Carl called to speak on the application. Carl, you says.
Yeah, all that red that you see on there with the hieroglyphics, that's not me. Uh, with the SI, all right, that's not me, everything is in black, is myself, with my initials is Y D, but everything else that's in red is not myself.
So, Carl?
Well, we are doing just tents, we're doing tents, outside bars for participating bars, they'll have extension of premises. It's kind of something we're trying to keep, you know, doing on a regular basis, but whatever we gotta do to get this right.
I think it's great, how, how many people right now are part of this downtown Hemmershy Village Association?
It's gonna be eight bars, eight, eight restaurants and bars total.
Eight?
Yeah. The other two are not.
Carl, can you explain to me why the application is so incomplete and, and all these lines, it's just sort of like gibberish?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, I'll need to get with our group, because I'm not sure why it's missing that, but I'll get with our team and we can discuss it.
Okay.
So. Commissioner, from our webpage, it is not a, a registered neighborhood association? However, I believe Linda was able to research yesterday, or the day during agenda review, and she saw that that was an entity that was subscribed with DBPR. Linda, do you remember or recall that? Linda Short? So Linda, if you recall, you gave some information about the Hemmershy Village Association?
Downtown Hemmershy Village Association. Yes, absolutely, I looked it up in SunBiz, and it was an active corporation, it was reinstated in twenty twenty-three, so it's still active as of today.
When you say reinstated, when, what, does it go back?
Down in twenty twenty-one for not, for not paying their normal.
Annual.
Annual fees, and they got reinstated and paid twenty-two and twenty-threes last year.
With the state?
With the state.
Not with the city?
Not with the city, it's SunBiz.
Okay, so, Chris, could I ask you a few questions? Because all of the work that we've been doing on the revitalization of Hemmershy Street, all the charrettes we've had, the reports that you've had, when you've come to the commission, given us the reports, I just want to know if we're gonna be working with this group, is there, is there some sort of coordination or communication? Or is this the genesis of a new Hemmershy Street Association that we're gonna be able to work with in conjunction with what we're trying to do on that corridor?
Yeah, so Vice Mayor, when we brought the report back to you on the Hemmershy District project, one of the initiatives was to um, work with the owners and and folks out in that area to form a group like this. So at the time, we did not know there was a group that was already formed or in the works, so I think with this application is when at least I became aware of it as well. So we would want to work with that group going forward to get them registered, but also to be part of the conversation in terms of what happens out there in the future.
Right, I think it's so important, so I would just urge you to definitely, you know, reach out to the city, let's all work together on this, because, you know, there's such great potential there. So I'm really happy to see that you've taken this initiative, and I think it was just a lack of communication, because no one knew what you were doing, and no one knew there was an association, and we've been, did you participate in any of the charrettes and workshops, I think that we've had, that you've been there, right? So just let us know, and I think that'd be so helpful. Okay, so thank you, Mayor, with that, I'm happy to move this forward.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good luck. If it moves to seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and M Two is now approved, moving on to M Three, motion approving an event agreement and related road closure for a charity car show in District One. Anyone have any questions? They're being done. Would someone like to move the item?
Second.
It moves and seconded. Is this a car show for charity or is this charity cars?
Some of my cars are are charity cases.
If if you want to auction, I don't know, feel free.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so uh, it's been moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and M three is now approved. M four, motion approving an agreement for the Warfield Park Improvement, Cigarus Corp. One million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move, but I I have some comments, Mayor.
All right, it's been moved and do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. To move and seconded, Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a discussion about this at my pre-agenda meeting last evening and this has come up over time. So one of the key components of the Warfield Park improvements um in the South Middle River Neighborhood um, is the splash pad. So I'd like to ask Carl a couple of questions here. Um. Because an ongoing issue that we've had with splash pads in the city uh continues. I mean, for those of you that might be familiar, uh, we have a a big water feature splash pad feature at the Los Olas Ocean Side Park. Um, over the years since that park has opened, I have rarely seen that splash pad work uh and function the way it's supposed to. So I I'm just concerned, I don't, I'm not an expert on the technology of these water features, these splash pads.
It's squirt up.
I understand, uh, but obviously something's happening if they're not squirting up. Thank you for the explanation, Mayor. It's very helpful.
Just trying to help.
Okay, it's very helpful, thank you. Uh, so.
Events where they've worked? Uh, but you're saying not all of them work?
I would say that more often than not, the splash pad at the Los Olas Ocean Side Park does not work.
Is that right?
And if it does work, there's maybe one jet out of many that works, so it's not working as it was designed. Let's put it that way. Um, so here's my question. I just hate to see us keep doing these things where we, you know, we contract with folks. Warranties expire. Uh, we have too many examples of this. I mean, so I I'm just curious. Uh, number one, what is the status of that splash pad in Los Olas Ocean Side Park? And has technology evolved to the point where if we spend this one million, two hundred thousand and change in Warfield Park uh, that we're gonna have a different experience?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, uh, Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. So the 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 design for Warfield's Playground Splash Pad is a a standard one. The one that we have at the Loop is a lot more intricate. Um, yes, we have had some serious issues with its operation. Um, it is functioning now. Uh, we do uh still have.
Fully, fully functioning?
So some of the features of it does not, it still does not work.
Like what the water?
So like you can program some of it to kind of go and sync, but the actual premise of the splash pad works today. So in other words, we can't program it to do certain functions that is edited dedicated to do.
Like the patterns sometimes that they do differently?
Correct.
Okay.
There's uh some um very sensitive computers and components. I mean, I don't want to get too technical, but there's components that um, with the, some of the elements and kind of where the splash pad is located at has some impacts to the computers. There's some tube, almost a, I want to say a hundred feet of tube that has to be replaced. And so um, we've met with a various amount of vendors. Um, you know, last week we have it operational, it's operational today, but some of those features are uh limited. But for Warfield's design, um, it's not as intricate and um, we don't have the same concerns as this one, which we do with the loop.
So with the loop, um, are we working on fixing all that? Is it under, is there still a warranty for this stuff that's not working?
No, so there's also a compressor issue that um, which is what delayed it for the most part because it had to be ordered and it was on back order. Um, but um, the the company that we have on contract now um, hasn't been the greatest. And so we've had to go and look at other avenues to repair it to get it to the point where it is now. And we're still actively working to finalize those other areas, but we're working. So if you go there now, well, not now because it's late, but um, tomorrow you'll see it working.
Okay, well, I I hope that we can get it to the point where it functions the way it was designed and gives us all of the features because you know, that that park's not that old. So I mean, we should be able to, I think, just do better. Now, with regards to this splash pad in Warfield, um, I noticed that we did have to cut the scope of about three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to bring this in line uh, with the dollar amount that we're going to spend. So my concern, when I go to the detail on page one of two of Exhibit Four, which shows us the uh, the line by line spending for this park, mostly all of the cuts um to the program to get to that three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar savings are involved with the splash pad. So um, do we have a comfort level that when we do things like getting rid of rectangular this and that and removal of this and install this and relocate that and uh, we're gonna eliminate the splash pad safety surfacing, we're gonna eliminate the splash pad concrete base, um, things like this. Uh, and the others are all not related to the uh splash pad. They're like picnic tables and things like that. Do we have a comfort level that this is going to function the way we want it to?
Yes, because those elements that you're speaking to really kind of dictate the size. So in other words, we shrunk it. And that's basically what you're reading there is that the size of it is.
So the splash pad is just a little bit smaller than it was going to originally be?
Correct.
Okay, great. So we'll keep an eye on it. Thank you, Carl. I really appreciate it and I really hope that we are able to do something about the one of the Los Olas Ocean Side Park as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, with that, I'm I'm.
Um, I have, I have a question. Um, my question in regards to the splash pad that's at the loop, it's now, it's not working properly. The software, is it affected by the elements, the saltwater?
Yeah, so that is what the vendor is saying that part of the concerns is, is that it's the saltwater that's intrusing the um, the system. Because it's Scott, I want to say a couple of different computers um, that it's working on and it's operating for the programming of it, and that's what's impacting um, its functioning.
Okay. Um, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to work this um. Do we need to do a study to see about not putting certain technology or to determine if certain technology um, agrees with the beach? Because this is the second item that we're talking about that is malfunctioning because of the elements. We got the garage and now the splash pad. Are there any others that hasn't come to the table yet?
Not that I'm aware of, but.
Well, lighting, lighting in the wave wall.
Well, let me just say this, with regard to this, this is what we're spending a million, three hundred thousand dollars for?
No, it's more than that.
So that's just a component of it and there's other things that's should be accompanying that. But I will say that.
It's not the exhibit. Mayor, go to Exhibit Four. Go to Exhibit Four, page one of two, and you'll see the entire scope of the uh project.
I know what the bid tabulation is, but I'm looking at the final product. And the final product showed Exhibit Six shows this little triangle of things squirting out of the ground for a million, three hundred thousand dollars. And if we're spending money like that, this is a sin. This is ridiculous.
So the splash pad itself, once it was reduced, comes in at uh five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, near five hundred thousand.
Yes.
I I I mean, five hundred thousand is a lot of money, but five hundred thousand, which is still over the two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars over the budget. But um, after redesign and negotiations, we ended up getting it at three seventy-three.
Yeah. But there are really are another, a lot of line items, Mayor, if you look at that.
I did look at the line items, but all those look like they're components of the of this splash pad.
Well, no, no, some of them are upwards of, some of those are like seventy-five thousand for what um.
What? And and Mayor, real quick, our procurement chief just reminded me that uh those are conceptuals, those are not the final drawings.
Uh, that's okay if they're not the final drawing, but I'm looking at what the, what, what, what are we, what are we buying?
Well, there's playground shade structure, there's a lot of playground equipment besides this. There's a lot, there are a lot of things listed.
Million dollar monkey bars.
Well, there's seventy-one.
All right, that's a good going price, man.
Yeah, you wait, you with the monkey bars?
Well, I mean.
You're always mentioning monkey bars. Okay, but seriously, there are a lot of other items here. Again.
They were good enough for me, they could be good enough for them.
I guess. I I want to, again, just dovetail on what Commissioner Beasley Pittman is saying. I agree with her. She's like, that's so right on. When we do these contracts, when we enter into these um agreements with these companies, it's it's hard for me to believe that, especially on, you know, on the barrier island, on the beach, environmental issues, saltwater, wind, those have got to be considered. I mean, how would we?
This is not on the beach.
I understand, but I just wanted to, I'm I'm just saying.
The point is well taken. I mean, obviously, environmental concerns should be paramount because the wave wall has been, has been uh, has deteriorated twice, you know, and uh, you know, it seems to me that the saltwater impact and salt air uh definitely is going to degrade the system.
Right, and it's no secret that there's you know, salt and wind and.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
On the beach.
Wrecks my hair too, so it's.
Then and then also to add to that, if if the malfunction with the loops um, splash pad would not be necessarily the issue with the, if there's an issue with the Warfield Park, that was, that's how the question started, will it work? You know, will we experience the same malfunctions? So if we're talking about environmental, Warfield does not have that.
Um, it's different, it would have different impacts. Right.
And there's also a usage change difference too, because the one of the Loop will get quite significantly probably more used than the one at Warfield.
Okay. But I will tell you, Mayor, the neighbors, the neighborhood is very um happy about this project and excited and pleased and they really want to see this happen.
Yes, and then splash pads, that is now the number one um amenity and excitement at playgrounds. And if we're preparing for, like we said early, the next sixty years, we want to include items that will benefit and be what the community desires.
I guess with those oscillating lawn sprinklers are are not.
No, no longer that, nor your monkey bars, so.
Mayor, Mayor, I would have loved to have seen your childhood. That's all I can say. I can't even.
It was the same.
I can't even imagine. And but telephone with the cans and the string, did you enjoy that too?
Before you go away, I actually do have a question. Um, I I noticed it was one response. Um, for a project of this size and, you know, given what's going on with all the parks that we've got going on citywide, I'm a little concerned about that. So wh- why one response from Cigarus on this particular project? And what does that mean for all the other parks projects that we've got going forward? Because Lord knows there's a lot of them on the pipeline, so.
Commissioner Glenn Markle's Chief Productment Officer. Point well taken. As a matter of fact, as part of this process, we issued two addendums to extend, trying to entice competition. That didn't cut it. It just left us with Cigarus. One of the things that uh you will see as part of this year's budget is 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 that we're making an effort. We are doing some outreach. We're getting out there, we're gonna get the word out there as far as the city of Fort Lauderdale and how to submit bids, um, get them involved, get them comfortable. Um, so hopefully that's probably one of the major hurdles that we're experiencing. But um, point well taken. We did uh take a look at it. We monitor our bids. We tend to end up extending it. Um, first time around, we saw a lack of competition. Did it a second time and we had to pretty much cut bait at at a certain given point in time. Um, what we did to salvage the this actual bid is that we went into um negotiation phase because the ordinance allows for us to negotiate with a sole bidder.
Single bidder, yeah.
And then what we did, we ended up renegotiating and re-scoping the work. Um, and just, you know, for everyone's identification, there is, I think, a community center involved in this project, uh, community building, and there's renovations, exten- extensive renovations taking place as part of the one point two million dollars, but point well taken.
Okay, well, and I, the reason I'm I'm just kind of curious about that is I know when I'm talking to um developers, a lot of them are holding off on their projects right now because interest rates and construction costs have just gotten to a point where the numbers no longer work for them. And so a lot of folks are pausing their projects. Particularly on the commercial side, but also on the residential side. So I would think that a project like ours where, you know, there's no interest rate risk involved or anything else, that it would be attractive for people in the construction industry right now to be able to have a a client like the government who pays and they don't have to finance it. So. All right, um, just something for us to keep an eye on. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Are these splash pads, this is like a proprietary technology? I mean, why are there so few responses, do you think?
I I I don't think it's just the splash uh those uh splash pads. I think it's just above and 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 beyond that. Um, I think that overall, we're looking at a construction pro- project. I'm sure that the general contractors subs out certain work, um, including maybe the splash pads. But I don't think it's proprietary. I think there's more than one. I think it's more overall the comfort and general feeling on um garnering the the competition that projects just like this one should should deserve. And we're just not getting it right now.
Okay.
But we are doing some outreach out there.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, has the items been moved and seconded? If there are no more questions, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, M four is now approved. Um, and if you're doing, if uh Carl, if you, Carl, if you're doing improvements to the existing structure, please consider doing some um um, sound uh absorbing material in the Warfield Gym, because when we have meetings in there, it's very echoey and it's very hard to really conduct business. I know it's a gym for basketball and stuff like that, but it's a multipurpose center too.
Will do.
Thank you. I know that'll be another three hundred thousand, but. R one, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, please call the, uh, please recite the names into the record.
Yes, for tonight's resolution, Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Antoine Edwright, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Marine Advisory Board, Barry Flanagan, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights Redevelopment Board, Sonia Burrows, nominated by Mayor Trentals. Ginny Basin, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman. Parks Recreation Beaches Board, Zilla Tarko, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Samantha Sisler, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman. Sustainability Advisory Board, Cameron Stiegel, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman. And we received one additional name uh after publishing for the Education Advisory Board, Felicia Newkirk, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, and that rounds it out.
Okay, are there any other modifications or additions? They're being none. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
And uh Commissioner, that's as amended?
As amended.
Thank you. A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and the R one is now approved. I want to thank all those people who have agreed to participate in these boards and committees. Thank you for your commitment to our city. R two, resolution declaring notice of intent to lease city-owned property located at three thirty Southwest Second Street uh, Fort Lauderdale, commonly known as the New River Trading Post. Um, Ken, you just are here for answering questions, okay? No one else has signed up to speak. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Any questions?
Yeah, um. This was presented to us, um. This is a um I mean, um, with Chris, who who's who's the lead on this? Chris or who would be able to?
Actually, it's Angela Hughes, and she's available to answer any questions as well. And Angela runs our real estate asset management.
Ex- explain uh what this this item is a little bit, I mean.
Absolutely.
It has a lease and it's, that goes how long?
Yep, can do. Hi, Angela Salmon with the City Manager's Office. Commissioner, your question on this lease, this is a lease between us and New River Trading Post LLC. Their current lease right now is going to expire in February twenty fifty-eight. The current leaseholder came to the city and asked that we bring this item forward. And by city charter, we put this item out to competitive bid. This item tonight is just a notice of intent. So there's no decision making on it. It's to gauge the interest and to put a notice of intent out on the market if there's a desire.
Okay. What's the hurry?
Great question.
Twenty fifty-eight is what it reads?
February twenty fifty-eight.
Time flies.
That was my question.
I mean, it's being very proactive.
Yeah, I guess so. Well, it concerns me because it ties us down. What happens if we want to redevelop the area? We're gonna be stuck with the lease that we'd have to buy out. And is there any particular reason why they're asking for the extension? Are they looking to redevelop it? Are they looking to do some sort of improvements on it that require, you know, a lease extension?
So tonight, I believe.
Ken, do you, do you know anything about the the genesis of this request?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ken Krasnow from Colliers. Um, yes, I think there's a general desire, I think, as the Vice Mayor talked about uh, with regards to the improvement in the Hemershi District um, to look at uh options and alternatives for a long-term redevelopment that will invigorate the area and and you know, build on the plan that's in that's in place. So the current lease is roughly, what, twenty-five years or so left? So um, this has been a a discussion, I think, that the uh, developer, the leaseholder has had for a couple of years now. Um, but to really see what the market will tell us, we feel it's important to uh bring it out to the market and then see what the options are. So that's really the the item uh before you today is really just to uh allow us to go to the market and then bring back the old. and then bring back the alternatives for your discussion.
Oh, so this is not in itself a lease extension?
No, 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 no. This is just to go, this is just, we're literally just gonna go to the market and see again what some of the ideas and opportunities are with regards to uh improvements in Himmershy.
Well, how they're gonna build on it, but, but somebody already has the lease on it right now.
Right, till twenty fifty eight.
Right, so whatever comes back, it's.
Starting in tw- it would start in twenty fifty eight. Yeah.
Ken, you still intending just to make it a, a one-month uh solicitation out there? Cause the CAM says bids will be due back by May sixteenth, so that's gonna still hold?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Okay. Okay, any further questions on this? All right, um, thank you, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor, you want to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, declaring that certain land and improvements situated thereon owned by the City of Fort Lauderdale are not needed for governmental purposes and declaring the intention of the City Commission to lease such land and improvements there on pursuant to section eight point nine of the city charter, such lands located at three thirty Southwest Second Street, known as New River Trading Post, located on land more particularly described below, release of requests for proposals requiring publication of notice as to when the City Commission will evaluate bids, repealing all resolutions or parts thereof in conflict here with and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and R two is now approved. Um, PH one, public hearing, a resolution approving the use of Parks Bond land acquisition allocations toward improvements to the Lauderdale Isle Landing. Any questions with regard to this? If there are none, uh, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Resolution's been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a recommendation from the Parks Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board to transfer funds in the amount of two million three hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars from the City of Fort Lauderdale Parks and Recreation's general obligation bonds, land acquisition funds assigned to District Four and allocate said additional funds in a total amount of two million three hundred sixty-two thousand five, five hundred to finance park improvement projects at Lauderdale Isles Landing. Formerly known as River, Riverland Woods Park pursuant to terms and conditions outlined in City of Fort Lauderdale Resolution Number eighteen dash two-six-one and twenty dash zero eight, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Earl, did you? PH two. Public hearing, resolution approving the transfer and use of park bond, land acquisition uh ac- allocations toward improvements for Carter Park. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
Oh, Mayor, we gotta close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Well, we didn't do it on the first one.
Yeah, um.
Motion to close public hearing on the first one.
All right, let's go back. Let's go back. Well, because we have different rules for different items, since this, this was not a quasi judicial issue, so. All right, let's go back to PH one. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Some move, some move.
Second. Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, so public hearings closed on PH one, do we, Mr.? We have to revote on PH one? Okay, uh, who, who introduced the?
Me, I'll revoke it.
Okay, so it's been introduced?
I'll reintroduce.
Please call the roll.
Do I need to read it back into the record or just vote? Okay. No, 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 I was talking, I was talking to Tom. Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
I don't know, I may have to rethink my. Yes.
You do that.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and PH one is now approved.
Thank you.
PH two, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Some move.
Don't move.
Second. Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Mayor, I have a question on this, just a, a math question.
Well, we're just closing public hearing.
Is that what we're doing now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'm good. Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, so public hearing on PH two is now closed. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, when I'm looking at the CAM, it looks like uh we're going to transfer seven million three hundred thousand dollars. But if you look at the next page on the CAM, page two of three, it says there's seven million three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars remaining. So I'm just questioning, is that just a math error or are we just leaving sixty-nine thousand dollars to sit there by itself?
Sixty-nine thousand are on, is on the table.
Yeah, that's an error on our part, it's seven, three, sixty-nine.
So it should be the full amount that's left over. So page one of three should say in the amount of seven million three hundred sixty-nine thousand.
Yes, sir.
Not seven million three hundred.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you, I'm good now.
Okay, uh, would someone like to introduce the resolution as amended?
Introduce as amended.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that.
You're welcome.
Uh, please call the roll. On PH two.
Okay. A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a recommendation from the Parks Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board to transfer funds in the amount of seven million three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars from the City of Fort Lauderdale Parks and Recreation general obligation bonds, land acquisition funds, assigned to District Three and two million dollars from the existing Park Impact Fees Fund and allocate said additional funds in the total amount of nine million three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars to finance park improvement projects at Joseph C. Carter Park pursuant to the terms and conditions outlined in the City of Fort Lauderdale Resolution Numbers eighteen dash two-six-one and twenty dash zero eight, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and PH two is now approved. Moving on to ordinances of second reading. OSR one, this is second reading of quasi judicial ordinance rezoning from residential single-family clustered dwellings low, medium-density district and Parks Recreation and Open Space District to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West District. This is at fourteen oh nine West Sistrunk Boulevard. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
No additional disclosures.
Uh, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
I have none. Vice Mayor?
None.
And Commissioner Sturman?
None.
Okay, uh, one person has signed up to speak, but just for questions, where are you? There you are, just for questions, right? Yep, okay, so would someone like to move to close public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, a public hearing is now closed on OSR one. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
Been introduced, please call the roll.
Mayor, this requires unanimous vote. I beg your pardon, unanimous vote on this hearing?
This has to be unanimous?
Mm-hmm.
It has to be.
Oh, what is it worth to them?
We're reversing the parks zoning.
That's weird. Okay.
All right, in ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale Schedule A Revised Compilation attached there to and by reference made a part thereof so as to rezon from residential, single-family, clustered dwellings, low, medium-density district to Parks Recreation and open space district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West District Lots thirty-nine through four, four, forty-eight inclusive Block Three, Lincoln Park Corrected Plot according to the plot thereof, as recorded in Plot Book Five, Page Two, together with lots one through eight less road right of way, lots nine through sixteen inclusive, and lots forty-two through fifty inclusive, Block Two, Lincoln Park Corrected Plot according to the plot thereof, as recorded in Plot Book Five, Page Two, also together with that portion of the vacated Northwest Fourteenth terrace described in official records book, three oh three, six, three, page one, two, zero, nine. All of public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Sistrunk Boulevard, east of Northwest Fourteenth Way, west of Northwest Fourteenth Avenue and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale Broward County, Florida, containing eighty-four thousand five hundred and twenty square feet or one point nine four zero three acres, more or less. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and OSR one is now approved on second reading. OSR two, second reading and ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations. Let's see, uh, no one has signed up to speak. Anyone have any questions with regard to OSR two? There being none, uh, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations more specifically amending section forty-seven dash five point sixty point D Residential Office District to replace a reference to R four district with RMH sixty district, providing for correction of scrivener errors, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and OSR two is now approved on second reading. Finally, OSR three, second reading and ordinance amending the non-bargaining unit classification table of the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by adding two new job classifications and changing the pay grades of two job classifications. Uh, anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the non-bargaining unit classification table, the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida as amended by creating and adding two job classifications and changing the pay grades of two job classifications, providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinance provisions and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and OSR three is now approved on second reading. Is there any further business of the commission? Mister City Manager, do you have anything else?
No, Commissioner, and Mayor.
Mister City, City Attorney, do you have any uh closed-door sessions to announce?
No.
And remember, the commission have anything additional to add?
Well, hold on, oh, 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 were you still talking?
Mayor, I was gonna tell you that I do have a meeting with Drew Myers, the county attorney, on the homeless camping law, next Monday with his, him, two of his staff, and a number of our staff, prosecutors.
Okay, that's not, that's, that's not part of the meeting, though.
No, yeah, just noted.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Shitty afternoon, but at least the evening session was.
No one needs nothing. Oh, oh, see, can you see?
Just leave it here. Other things, guys.
Where's the mic?
And what could I do? I was gonna...
...